Good evening. We're going to call the meeting to order, the Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 meeting, and we're going to go into executive session to discuss district matter 2.1, school safety, 2.2 negotiations matter, CSEA, 2.3 personnel matter, and 2.4 legal matter.
So moved?
Yeah, second. All those in favor? Thank you. We'll see you in a bit. Thanks. Just to say that we went into executive session and we discussed 2.0 district matter, 2.2 negotiations matter, CSEA, 2.3 personnel matter, administrative tenure, and, sorry, 2.4 legal matter district. And I'll have to call the motion for that. Okay. And now if I can have everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A lull in evening to everybody. Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. We had no revisions of the agenda, correct?
Nope.
Okay. And I am going to ask for a motion to approve tonight's regular agenda and consent agenda, and it's going to be 6.1 personnel items, consent agendas, I guess, I'm sorry, do I have to read all of them? 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, 6.3 is regular substitute teacher appointments, 6.4, non-represented, do I have to read all of them?
You don't have to.
Sorry about that, everybody.
Consent for business.
Consent for business, right. And sorry, and the consent agenda 7 for special services, committee on special education and CSE recommendations, and the consent agenda 8, 1, business items. So can I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And we will go, I guess, to unfinished business, 9.1 board goals. Last time we met, we gave out, we disseminated the board goals to everyone. Did everyone have a chance to look at them? And if there are any comments at this time, we would like to hear them.
I think the last time I went through the board goals delineating, delineating, delineating what was happening at each of the grade levels and buildings and district wide for excellence in teaching and learning, something that we haven't quite done before, but we really felt warranted it this year with so many exciting programs. Another, under that subtitle, for using data to inform practice, our ever-arching goal to get our data platform enriched and to be able to look at kids in multiple different ways to see what their learning is. And then a big emphasis on social, emotional, and physical health and safety of students and staff. Not only the health protocols, but all the work that Gina does with security and all of the work that Andrew Taylor and Tim do with cybersecurity. And fiscal accountability and communications, current year issues, long-term outlook, which we've had before. But then a huge focus on the last two. The one is leadership and succession planning, of really building that succession planning within the district. We've had many people from outside of the district who bring us a really great lens as to what they're, you know, we have Kelly, for example, was in other districts before he came here. That was not a result of succession planning within the district, but also how we look at teachers and to move to administrative roles and administrators to change roles, and I'm really proud of. This year already, with Peggy McInerney going to Coleman Hill and Dave Mack rising to the position of principal, Lisa Palmer, a teacher, I mean, we've been doing that, Colleen O'Connor going from assistant principal to assistant director. So, and then having two people that were not Byram bred, has our new assistant principals at high school and new information and functionality that they have shown us. So that's really great. I want to continue to build that. And have conversations with the board about maybe connections we can make with different universities. I know that I am a product of a program that Byram Hills was partnering with at the time. When I first met for my administrative degree, a third of it was paid by Fordham, a third by Byram, and a third by me. And at that time, that was really an incentive for me to go for this degree because it is difficult. You know, at the time, I had a two-year-old and a three-year-old and already had student loans up the wazoo. So it was, it was really beneficial to me to be able to do that. So just to see if there's something out there to have future conversations with the board. And then I'm really excited that Scott Levy is on our board and he can really share with us all of his work with West Putt and Westchester-Cutten School Boards. And identifying advocacy areas of focus, we have a lot of long conversations about legislative forums and what the district should be behind or not necessarily have an opinion about, or it's not just about what affects our kids, but what affects public education in general. So I'm looking forward to Scott's current role there and how that can support the board's knowledge base for advocacy. I also met with the PTSA today about advocacy. There's always somebody who sits on the PTSA as an advocacy chair, and just had a conversation about places to go to look at advocacy for public education and to bring that to the PTSA to see what is it the PTSA feels strongly about supporting or not supporting as an organization. And I reminded them of the time that they were so helpful with state testing and that rallying behind public education for the benefit of kids is a great help to school districts when we need to go more to a higher level. So that's really it for our goals. There are quite a bit of them.
Should I go?
Yeah, go for it.
I had two, like, questions that I thought were worth at least bringing up, just to think whether or not maybe it could be included, or if they're not a goal, then maybe they could be handled in a different way. One of which is that art and music probably suffered more during COVID generally than even athletics, just because it was so difficult to run those programs for a number of years. And so probably, and I don't know the numbers, but the number of kids that, you know, that are playing instruments are probably diminished to what they were. And obviously, we continue to have more great programming on the academic side, which pulls. And so, you know, the question was, you know, is it worth either putting on this or in some way, shape, or form this year, just doing some presentations on art and music so that we really, you know, get our arms around whether there's anything else that we can or should be doing? So that was like one thought. And the second, which is on completely different topic, more in Kelly's end on the financial side, was, and I'm not even sure this is adding a lot of new work, but I think it's tying together some of the long-term outlook items that are already there, that maybe one of the things that would be helpful to do is to really look at like key risks that we could face over the next few years, especially given that there's an increased probability, certainly we don't know, but there's a probability that we could go into recession. So for example, if, if we had tax certs that were, you know, much higher and/or if we saw literally a state aid or at least on the foundations, like go to zero because they did a more progressive formula, you know, big risks that could, you know, seriously impact our bottom line, just to kind of identify them. We're not going to be able to control and stop them necessarily, but in some cases maybe we can, but certainly prepare if we had any, it was just like, what would we do? Do we have enough reserves? And what does our debt look like? And just start thinking.
Scenario-based kind of.
Exactly. So like really the key risk analysis.
Okay.
Those are like the two things that I thought. And then I just had one quick question, which is that Stanford, University of Michigan, we know a ton about those programs because they've been around for a long time. Cognitive and behavioral consulting associates, that one I didn't know. And so if it's going to be in the goals, just a kind of a sense of like what that is.
Yep. So we've actually done that work with the Michigan, University of Michigan Depression Center, where they did CBT training of all of our guidance counselors and school psychologists. And it has been a long time since we've done that training, so it is really reinvigorating the training that is going to happen at high school level.
Got it.
Yep.
I was just talking with Chris Washington calling O'Connor today about bringing that training and continuing with DVT training, which is a little deeper and a different approach.
I just want to say with cognitive behavioral therapy versus dialectical, right?
Exactly, right. So it's a different approach. I think Gina and Jen know more than I do about it, so I'll be part of the training. But we're planning a training for, so we have several new psychologists and guidance counselors, so we wanted to continue that training. And I was just working with some of the FOCs to bring some trainers in. So we're working on that right now.
That's great.
To extend that work.
Where did it say that the company that Scott just was talking about is on?
Oh, it's on, under.
Social learning. Okay, I see it. Yeah.
Great additions.
So those are great additions. Does anyone have any other comments or concerns about the board goals, any additions, subtractions?
There's a lot of goals on it.
Yeah, there's a lot.
It's a lot.
This is very ambitious.
Is he adopting this in the next?
We could adopt it today with revisions.
Can you adopt it with revisions this evening, or would you rather see it again one more time and adopt it the next board meeting?
The only changes I'll make are, I don't know if the board trusts my, for K-12, we'll add a study and review of the art and music programs post-COVID. And then for key risk analysis of risks that we may face over the next few years.
Yep.
I think there's sort of the long-term outlook sort of, it's under there, it's just sort of adding that one forecast type of thing. Okay. And do you want further discussion about that other program that we're utilizing for the social, emotional learning, or you're good with it?
I'm good with it. At some point, it'd be great to.
Oh, yeah, we will. Okay. Everyone else is okay to approve this evening? So can I have a motion to approve the board goals for the?
So moved.
Oh, second.
All those in favor? Great. Thank you. With the additions, I should say, for approving it. Great, okay.
Thank you for putting.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Scott. Okay. So that brings us to new business, and I'm going to ask for a motion to designate, again, Scott Levy as our designee for the New York State, the NISBA, New York State School Board Association Annual Meeting, so he can vote on resolutions for this state. And this, this meeting will take place in mid-October, and we're authorizing him to vote for the, for the board. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. And we'll move on to 10.2 board education retreat topics.
I just wanted to get a final head count from the board. If there's anything other than communications with the community, I think that this board goes above and beyond in communicating with different community groups, but have expressed to me as a superintendent that it's a great opportunity for the board to look at all of the constituent groups in our community and how the board might be reaching those constituent groups and caring about those groups. So I think that'll be the basis for our retreat, and just wanted to give it one more opportunity to see if there's anything else you wanted to add, but.
The only thing to add is the board evaluation, the board self-evaluation.
That's correct. Great.
To the retreat?
Exactly. It's a, like, it's a, it's like a permitted retreat item and a good chance to talk about just the way we work together.
The process.
Yep, the process of how we work together.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. And then we move on to staff reports.
Superintendent report. All right. So a few things that I wanted to talk about. Tim is putting up a presentation for me right now. But I want to talk a little bit about substantial equivalency, and the board knows what that is all about. And we have very specific dates by which we have to report other districts. It's by the end of September. We need to report any other districts that is in our, any other school that's in our school district grounds area. We have to report that to the state. That's going to be a responsibility that we do through reporting with Kelly. And then after that, we're going to be given guidelines as to how to evaluate these other schools, and the board is going to have to approve whether or not the schools in our area are substantially equivalent in education to a public school education. There are going to be things that people can check off where they don't have to be approved by local boards, like if they offer Regents exams, et cetera. We have Westfield Day in our school community, and I would be shocked if they didn't meet one of the criteria by which to evaluate themselves. So this is not an issue for us. It very much is an issue for some other districts. There are some districts that have very competitive private schools that are in their public school town, and, you know, now it's up to the public school to go and say, this is a substantially equivalent education to this sort of competitive private school in their town. So that's something that some Westchester schools are facing. There are also religious-based schools that are not known, right? So even though the state should know that these schools exist, if they're giving these schools any kinds of funds, they are not preparing lists for superintendents. So there are some superintendents who will be scouting how to figure out where these schools actually exist in their community. So this is very difficult for many other superintendents and not difficult for this superintendent. But I, you know, I see the problem with the way it's structured and set up, but it won't be, I don't think, affecting this board. The next thing is Scott went over NISBA's advocacy resolutions. He'll be taking care of that. Kelly will be talking a little bit about library renovation plans to present to the board at some point. And the only other thing I have left are some student highlights. Welcome back, Byram. I just love the smiling faces at each of the schools. Go ahead, Tim. And the kids, I mean, like, if you just look at these smiling faces, that's what it felt like. I said that on the first day of school, I was in the high school, and I, when I was speaking with the kids, it felt like I gave them a gift. That's how they reacted. They were so happy to be at school and happy to be around each other, and still are. So other student highlights that we have right now are national merit semi-final. Wow.
Some of the biggest groups.
I think it is one of the biggest. We have Clara Wile, Ethan Cherry, Mahir Kumar, Alexander Khan, Remy Matza, Samantha Milowicz, Kelsey Becaro, and Alaska Fairbanks, who's actually not pictured. But they can compete for 7250 scholarships worth nearly $28 million if they want to register for that. So congratulations. That's pretty amazing. I'm proud of all of them. And congratulations, this is something that is like not Byram, but totally Byram. Sebastian Lashman, in late August, he brought home.
Awesome.
It's, it's actually unbelievable.
Wow.
I have a neighbor who's all things Pokemon, and this is better than winning the gold at the Olympics to anyone who understands Pokemon, right? So he brought home the silver trophy from the world championship in London, and these are by invitation only. He competed against top players from Europe, Asia, and the Americas, and he fought through two days of qualifying rounds when he defeated the world number one. And then he made the top cut of 12 to beat the reigning European champion, and then went on to the quarterfinals by besting one of Brazil's top players. And Sebastian advanced all the way to the finals on center stage and finished with a second-place finish in sudden death overtime.
Wow.
That's like beyond. I can't even imagine. It's absolutely amazing. Yeah. So congratulations. And even though we didn't prepare you with Pokemon at Byram, I have to say that maybe some of the talents you have acquired, your skills happened in your class. No, I think it happened because of your passion for what you're doing, and we're incredibly proud of you.
Yes.
How amazing that he got to travel and everything.
Ah, it's awesome. It's really awesome. Yeah. Just, oh, fantastic. So, gold Bobcats.
Awesome.
And now I will turn it over to you.
You chop.
Yes. No, I'm on my first one.
Oh, my gosh. That's so nice. We're so far. How do you vote?
Yeah. You don't see all my votes.
So just a brief presentation, I want to just provide a follow-up to the presentation I gave at the last board meeting around the literacy study. So it's in the spirit of continuous improvement, where I presented with you the cycle of the curriculum review that we will be doing this year in several different areas, and K-5 literacy is one of those areas. We've been exploring it for several years now, and we decided to convene a district-wide committee that combines administrators, teachers, and parents, bringing us together so we could dive deep into literacy. So last week, over the last two weeks, I put out a call for participation, and next week, I'll be sending out those parents who will be selected, as well as teachers and administrators. I want to thank Lera Stengel and Melissa Jacobs for being our board representatives. So we have a lot of parent interest, and I wanted to present tonight because we first have the literacy study group, and these are the five days that we will be meeting. I also want to present our draft agenda. So we're going to be looking at the developmental levels of readers and look at literacy through the lens of students as they become emergent in literacy, emergent readers, through post-transitional readers. So we're going to be looking at the developmental stages of reading and literacy in general, and then looking at it from the different pillars of literacy, which include comprehension, vocabulary, fluency, and phonics, as well as other areas. Those are the ones most commonly defined, but there are other areas as well. So that's why we decided to look at the developmental stage. What we're looking for the outcomes is just what we learn together through our discussions and by reading the current literature and reading research in literacy is coming away with some takeaways that we then, over the next several years, will bring back to the district to continue that study with our faculty as we make decisions about our K-5 literacy program over the next few years. That is the goal of this study, just to really go in with an open mind and learn, and then bring that back internally and continue those discussions. We have such a large amount of public interest that I decided to add five additional public meetings in addition to the study group. The reason I'm keeping the study group limited is so we can really engage in good discussion. If it gets too big, I think it's just going to become presentational and not a discussion group. But I do want to have as many parents involved as possible. So we are adding some additional meetings that will be open to anyone who wants to attend, where we will summarize what we're learning and continue that, to expand that discussion to other parents who might be interested in joining. So we, the first one will be November 29th, which will be after the first two study group sessions, so we can summarize what we're doing at a principal's coffee. We'll do a combined K-5 principal's coffee that we will add to the calendar. And that information, the details, will be blasted out by the principals of Coleman Hill and Wantness. And on December 6th, our curriculum conversation will be around the literacy study as well. So our expert consultants, as well as study group members, will come up and will talk to the board and talk to you. Lera and Melissa can also add to the conversation as we talk about what we're learning and, you know, new questions that we might be asking ourselves. We'll do another, the third public session will be our site-based team meeting, which is already scheduled for February 9th, so I'm going to make that around literacy, as well as an evening discussion in March, and then in April, another principal's coffee. So there'll be plenty of opportunities for parents who aren't selected to be on the committee to still engage in a conversation and discuss with us and, and learn with us. I will also be posting all the information, any readings that we get, and any summary of our learnings from the public meetings will be posted on our website. And I have a dedicated webpage that we will be constantly updating as we go through these meetings, so the community can be involved in and know what we're talking about. So I wanted to provide that update on the literacy study, and we're looking forward to getting started in October. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Very excited about that.
Very excited about this. One other quick thing is you'll notice you have a paper copy of the administrative goals, so we go back to our normal goals of the past two years. So we will have a curriculum conversation at the October board meeting with our entire administrative team, which is really a highlight of the year, where we bring all our administrators together for a discussion around the goals. So this documents, this document started at our administrative retreat, where we start thinking about, reflecting on the previous years and thinking about where we're headed going forward, and lots of engagement discussion on our two-day summer retreat, and then putting together this really amazing document. I wanted to get it to you a month ahead because it's pretty dense, so you have time to start reading it. And then I'll, it's also in your packet if you want it electronically as well. So any questions you might have that, as you're reading it, send it to Lera, and she will forward it to Jen, who will get them to me. And I'll make sure that we address those questions with the council when they're here. But it's meant to be a discussion, so you can just talk directly to that as well.
And in Ira's absence, somebody has to put Melissa Stoll on the spot, and someone must get one of those, right? Because I always like.
I think we should get Judge Showman to come back.
Yeah, that would be great. That would be great. We should put him in the audience.
But he's not allowed to say anything.
We can't.
That's right. Same during comment period.
I don't think you can do that.
Talk about torture. Can we sit here quiet? Lera has to keep it quiet.
I got to speak with him. He came over recently, and he did say he misses the board very, very much. And I said, I don't think there's a board meeting we've had yet that we haven't mentioned him, so, or, you know, what would Ira have done or said?
That's exactly.
So we, you know, we miss you, and we learn from you, and that's, you're watching. We're still talking.
No, that's great.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on.
Yes.
Kelly, yes?
Just a couple updates. An update on the water project over at the high school. We haven't received approval yet for our plants, so we're still waiting on that like many other towns and other districts. However, the Friday before, before the start of school, we had an issue with our UV system, a sensor malfunction in the UV system.
We were missing the eye.
Yes, it's essentially an eye. Basically, what it does, it ensures that the UV rays are on and that they're enough magnitude to continue the process of clarifying the water. Unfortunately, that, that part has been discontinued. The company that made the products sold the company to another company, and they don't offer this product. So we're kind of in a bit of a gear shift here. We're trying to figure out somewhere to get it, whether it be another country, another district, another thing, and trying to manufacture it possibly with, with help of the company. So we're kind of in a standstill. Of course, it was before school started, so we had to do something with the water. So all our water fountains are shut off, and we have filling stations.
At the high school.
Dispensers at the high school. This obviously only affects the high school property. So again, we'll kind of hopefully get that part. If not, we'll be on, on that bottled water until we get a solution. Unfortunately, the easy fix is we take the UV system out, put a UV system in. But this whole water project is switching from UV to chlorine, so it doesn't make sense to take it out, put a UV in, and take it out, put a chlorine in. So, you know, we'll do what we can to try to speed up that process, and hopefully, you know, we get our plans approved, and we can start that, that switch over to chlorine and go forward with that.
Thank everyone involved. I guess it was Steve's teen that had the water.
Oh, God.
Getting everybody up and running with city water.
They were at every Home Depot and Lowe's.
Yes, yes.
Costco. He appreciated us.
Of course, nobody had dispensers. Yeah, we found them.
Kelly, what's the timing for the switch over of the chlorine system?
As soon as we get approval, we'll start that process.
And we may still get dinged for not having it, even though all we're waiting on is the approval.
A hundred percent. We will, we'll get notices.
Because they have to do their evaluations, and they have to say we're still not.
And the town's in a similar situation. They're waiting for approval for their, their project as well. So everybody's kind of just, it's a stack of approvals, and they're getting to them as they get to them. So unfortunately, we're in that, in that hole, that queue there. A question came related to the cell phone tower potential project here. You may recall, we looked at this last year about potentially putting a tower on a district property. There was a lot of issues in terms of the location, but unfortunately, we decided not to go forward with that project due to the proximity of the cell tower to the homes and nearest near here. We do have Wi-Fi calling, and that is utilized by a lot of our staff, and we're going to take a look at that and try to expand that further, so we have that option for our staff and students.
And we're just waiting for the tankless water heater of cell phones to come. That's it.
Someday. 5G something.
Some 5G something or the other. It's right around the corner.
Absolutely.
You can smell it.
If you recall, about two years ago, we did transportation study kind of before COVID. We looked at transportation. Jen and I spoke about potentially not doing that update right away, waiting a year or two. You know, we're kind of getting back to the ridership, normal ridership, so maybe give that a year or two, see how that goes, and then maybe update that transportation study and go from there.
I mean, the people are not even at the same bus stops.
Yes. And we got a lot, a lot more elementary students.
It's graduating, the new kids come and. It's graduating, the kids come.
It's probably too early to tell, but are we close to the same ridership as pre-pandemic? Or are we just not able to?
So if you look at Coman Hill, we used to have about 70 cars coming into Coman Hill and now we have about 90. And during the pandemic, we had about 245. So to give you a sense of more people are riding the bus and, you know, we, we, I think, is it next week? We are starting the activity buses? 28th, right?
Next Wednesday.
Eight days away. 28th, we're starting activity buses and then we'll see a change also at that one.
Yeah, so we give it a couple of years and then we start that process of looking at our routes and everything. Just a quick update on the solar project I discussed with you last, present, last board meeting. Got some information from Content Solutions, some paperwork. I've talked to our attorney and they're reviewing that currently. Going to give you some, you know, the idea in terms of revisions or any changes, challenges, and then we'll kind of go forward that way. So they'll definitely keep you guys in the loop of any, any issues or anything that comes up. So we're kind of very, very low in the process. We're working our way up. But again, you'll be hearing from me about this probably the whole year.
So Content Solutions is the entity that we'll be transacting with?
Yes. Yep. And they've worked with Ardsley and the casings in the district in this area. And then just a reminder, in terms of the timeline for the capital project, the, the high school learning commons, we're meeting next Wednesday, the 28th, with architects and engineers to go over some, some rendering and some potential projects. They have a couple, a couple, three ideas for the space. So we're going to be doing that on the 28th. And then in terms of the timeline, we're hoping to finalize that, that, that project probably by the end of October at the latest. After that, it goes to the budget estimators, which could take two to three weeks in terms of give us a number of what we think this project is going to cost potentially. And then obviously, with consultation with the board, the finance advisory committee in terms of recommendation for, for the budget vote, we'll be discussing it in all our budget presentations and then put it on the ballot. If it were to get approved, the SED process, you're probably talking till the end of the summer next year. And then you go through the bid process, you're probably talking December-ish, January, February, talking around March, getting the actual bid documents, complete results in. So that construction will actually take place in the summer of 2024. If everything kind of fell ducks in a row. Again, just as a reminder. And I'll keep you abreast through the whole process at each meeting, where we are and where we're going. And you'll obviously see some of the scope of the projects and everything like that if you're approval. And then finally, for me, next board meeting, I'm going to be discussing the budget and expenditure report. And we'll provide a presentation to the board of the prior year. We'll be doing the audit that, that board meeting too, so it's going to fit nicely where we landed in terms of budget and expenditures, actual expenditures. So something the board requested and we're going to kind of keep that process going forward in combination with the audit, if it's kind of perfect.
Great.
And that's the thing.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
We know what you've been doing. Thank you, Kelly. Anything else? Let's see. No, all good? Okay. And I guess we're moving on to board reports.
We had an athletic advisory meeting that's continuing this week. And we're taking a deep dive into modified sports and JV sports and creating pipelines for our policy stores. So it was such a lively discussion that it's continuing this week. So I'll have more to report on next meeting.
Great. Rob put those questions together too and sent them to me and to Chris Walsh to talk about. They didn't say who asked them.
We were very competitive, did not realize.
That's okay. A little competition in sports, remember?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any other board reports from anybody?
Just a quick note on Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. On October 3rd, there's a roundtable. It's going to be in person. It's at BOSs, not too far. And it's, it's really all about networking and meeting board members from other districts in the county. There'll be like a topic, a table, all, all kinds of topics. We'll talk about that night. So if anybody's interested, they can sign up through Debbie. It's October 3rd.
Thank you. That's just for board members, right?
One more thing that is. Yom Kippur. Am I wrong?
Yeah, it's before.
Oh, it's Monday. Yeah, it's Monday.
Monday, Thursday, Monday, exactly.
Yeah. I think I.
Yom Kippur's on Wednesday.
It is. Starts the night before, right? Yeah. And just from, it was a wonderful start to school. We're very excited.[1702.38]